We're gonna open the meeting. Stanford Pledge Allegiance, Tyler, can you lead us?
Thank you.
The Pledge Allegiance.
To the flag, we United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hearing of citizens, do we have anybody who'd like to be here for three minutes? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Senate Bill Two. Ms. Feeney?
Yes, so Board, tonight I'm asking us to adopt this resolution to oppose the ESA voucher programs. ESAs are Educational Savings Accounts. It's also known as Senate Bill Two. I think most of us in the room are very familiar with this legislation. It got out of committee, and now it essentially will take a lot of resources away from our students, and they will be, parents will be able to set up Educational Savings Accounts, and they'll be able to use that money for private school tuition or parochial school tuition. They'll also be able to use it for books, resources like that, tutoring. But essentially what we're doing is we're taking valuable dollars that we need to educate our students and away from our district. Since we're in a position right now where we just received $14 million, this legislation could hurt us very seriously, dramatically, because we would be losing those resources. So I've given you the resolution, it's in front of you. I've also given you some other information, some facts to educate yourselves about this bill. And there's also a lot of research out there that says that these voucher programs, because essentially this is a voucher program with a different name, Educational Savings Account, that they really haven't been found to be successful. They've done a lot of studies, and they have said that students that do use these voucher programs in parochial and private schools really aren't any further ahead when it comes to testing than our students are in public schools. Approximately 150 school boards throughout the state have already adopted this resolution. Some of our neighbors have adopted this resolution. Fairview School District has adopted it. I believe Fort LeBeuf has, Corey, Union City. So I just think it's a great way for us as school directors to support each other and to support our students. And so we'd be sending a loud message to our legislatures, a legislator down in Harrisburg, that we are asking them to vote against this Senate bill.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I fully support Mrs. Feeney's proposal. Just to give you some background numbers, we currently have about 2,000 students that are in non-public or parochial schools. If this legislation became enacted, we would have the potential to lose almost $17 million in subsidy. This proposal would make a lot more sense if the state would actually fully adopt the fair funding formula and drive out dollars, including for these students. But at this point, they're not doing that, so it really unnecessarily burdens us as a district if it was implemented.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to voice my support for this resolution and thank Mrs. Feeney for bringing it to our attention. I support it 100 percent.
Todd?
Does Mrs. Feeney or Mr. Walker know what the status is? I mean, or if it'll be put to a vote in the legislative seat? Or how far along it is?
It was referred to the Senate Education Committee on October 18th of 2017, and it has not moved.
I don't know how to react to that. I don't know if that's true news, or what does it mean?
It's not on the past, well, it hasn't been on the past track, but it's also been, there hasn't exactly been a flurry of activity in session days.
Okay.
And most large proposals such as these would be considered as part of budget packages that may pass in the last few days of June.
I was just curious, no reason. I agree with Robyn and Mrs.
Yeah, I agree too. I actually got a phone call from the PSBA on it, I think I told you that. And Darlene had already brought it to the board, so that was a good one.
If no more questions, we'll move on to the financial recovery plan. Mr. Cleo?
So just a quick update on our financial administrator and the beginnings of our financial recovery plan. We had a very good first week with Mr. Zogby. We spent the first day meeting with him, sharing a lot of information about where we've been, our current status on a number of things, including our buildings and our labor contracts, and also shared with him some of the cost savings initiatives that we had implemented or were in the process of implementing. He has expressed over and over again that his willingness to work with us, and he indicates that he's here to help us achieve our goals, both educationally and financially. So at this point, I feel that it's going to be a very positive process for us. We already have started bringing PFM into the mix here. He sent me an email this week, and Dave is finalizing the 1718 projections and the budget for this year. We're going to go over that tonight. He'll be sending that off to PFM here to start to redevelop our five-year projections, because they have not been up here since we've done the reconfiguration and received the $14 million. So we really need to have them update those numbers to see exactly where we are five years out. He's also reached out to PFM. They had a facilities person come up here the first time around. He's going to get them involved in this process and have them help us develop our facilities plan, because again, I think that's going to be a big component of this financial recovery plan, is trying to find a way to maximize what dollars we have available to address our infrastructure needs. So that's in the works. And the other thing, and I think I could probably wrap number six, LERTA, into this. We have done a preliminary estimate of what 10-year, 100 percent LERTA would do for the district. In the long term, we would have some pretty significant positive benefits. But in the short term, at this point, we feel that it may result in a loss of about $160,000 to $200,000 in revenue a year. He has agreed to have PFM really take a close look at that. Dave and I have done some preliminary work on it. But we feel it would be important to have them take a look at this. And Mr. Zogby indicated that he would like the LERTA issue to be included in developing our five-year projections. So once we have the projections put together, we have our educational needs and we have our facilities needs. We can put all of those, as well as the LERTA proposal, together in our plan and see what works long-term in the budget. So we mentioned that to the mayor this week, and he understands the situation we're in. So at this point, we're just slowing things down and allowing this process to work and let PFM do their work to make sure that everything's on track.
Thank you. I just wanted, because you brought up facilities, I don't know if everybody's aware, but I was over by Roosevelt the other day, and we had a big hump of a, the facade fell off above the tower, which probably weighs about 150, 200 pounds, whatever it is. But informed Brian and Eric, and I think Eric's gonna check the building, because there's a lot of those facades around there. And I hate to see something coming down on, you know, kids playing around there all the time, but that might be something we may have to move on quicker rather than later, because I think it's really becoming a safety problem. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that. We'll move on to the budget.
All right, we have the preliminary 2018-19 budget for you tonight. And at your desk, we have the full budget book. Feel free to read through it if you're having trouble sleeping at night. It has a lot of information in it. But seriously, as you look through it, if there is any questions about that, please feel free to email me, Randy, or Dave. We'll be able to answer any of your questions. Dave has a presentation that he's going to give you right now, and then he's going to go over, especially for the new board members, just a kind of a summary of what the book is and how it's set up.
So the book, which I'm sure you're all aware of, it's a pretty, it's a good 100 pages long here, but there's some good summaries of information in there. And the PowerPoint presentation is going to sort of highlight a lot of the summaries that are in the book, so it's going to kind of walk you through it and understand how it's really set up and how we will go through and really work through everything. There's also going to be some more information in here for us to just talk about and digest and everything as we go on. So as we start off here, this first slide is really related to page three of your book. The first page with really a summaries of information there. Page three and four are pretty much the same information, but this is, well, it repeats 1718 again. So this specifically being page three, it really compares what we budgeted for the 1718 school year and where we think we're going to end up at the end of this year, now that we are several months, only a couple months away from closing the year out. So in total, for the budget for 1718, we included $192 million of revenue. What we feel that is going to come in is about $198 million, a change of just under $6 million in total. Really main reason for that, you see in our state subsidy line, where that's going to come in, $5.7 million above where we budgeted. That's really because we didn't, we felt that an additional amount from the state was going to come in this year. We did not know what the amount was, and we felt to really plug the hole for the 1718 year, we needed about $8.5 million. So $8.5 million of the $14 million we got was really budgeted for in revenues for this year. So that difference there is really the additional going up to the $14 million there. The other two main changes up there, really, you see real estate taxes that come in at $1.8 million above. You have a little more detail in your book. This is a little condensed to fit on the slide there. That's really mostly in the delinquent tax line. We budgeted a flat $3.5 million to come in. This being really the first year that we didn't sell delinquent real estate taxes, our delinquent real estate tax balances that we had. It was a really difficult number to work with and budget with. We felt that $3.5 million was a good conservative amount that we are going to get in, and felt that it was a good really amount, $3.5 million annually over the next five years we would get. It seems that it's going to come in a little bit sooner this year, and then in the later years, it's going to tail off. So that's really why we're above on real estate taxes there. And really, the main other change on the revenue side, you see that we have $1.2 from other sources of revenue, where we really have zero there. And that's really a change in our accounting methodology for it, where the $1.2 million were planned on a money coming into the general fund from the food service fund to cover related expenditures in the food service line that would be down below. What we really did is we changed it. We took the food service-related expenses that we sort of share with the general fund and moved those over to the food service fund. So when we see a reduction in revenue there, we really see almost corresponding reduction in some expenses below. So it's almost a net zero effect on our bottom line there. Moving on to the expenditure side, we budgeted $192 million. Where we see, where we think we're going to be is $189. The main thing I want to point out here is that you have, your last line on this PowerPoint slide and on your summary sheet there in the expenditures is a transfer to a capital reserve fund. That is really an amount that we really feel that should really be set aside into a separate capital reserve fund specifically dedicated to correcting issues with our buildings and everything.
So with that, if you see what we budgeted, $3 million, our initial budget assumed that we were going to move ahead with a bond issue, and we would incur an additional $3 million in debt service. So that did not occur this year. And with some of the additional savings that we realized throughout the year, we were able to identify another $5 million, and that's really one-time money. And if you remember the five-year projections that we looked at, we show a pretty big surplus for 1718 after the $14 million. And then that drops a couple million dollars each year until it gets to be about break-even in year five. So what we're proposing here is to maintain a fund balance of $8 million. That will allow us to pay our bills on time and keep a reasonable reserve in our bank account that's about a half a month worth of expenses. And when we have these surpluses over the next several years, to sweep those surpluses into a capital projects fund, and that will give us money to work with outside of the bond issue on our facilities. Again, we don't want to use that money to incur recurring expenses like salaries or, you know, developing, you know, some of the things we're doing with the strategic plan, because that is decreasing over the next several years. And if we do that, then we're going to be in trouble in future years. So right now, we're proposing just to sweep that in, the capital projects. And so this year, at the end of the year, we would anticipate having about $5.3 million available to start really working on our buildings and identifying some of the major issues that we need to address and working on them.
Yes, Todd?
Mr. President, if somebody takes a look at our books and they don't understand what you just said, they look, they say, huh, from the state, we'll say, hypothetically, oh, you have $8 million just sitting there. So do we just get, you know, $6 million too much?
So the $8 million is, the state--
No, I understand.
Yeah, so they don't want to see a fund balance over 8 percent, which for us would be about $18 million.
Oh, okay.
So we're way below even that amount. But again, we feel that we can operate comfortably with the $8 million and then feel that instead of having, you know, that 18 sit in reserves right now, really utilize some of that to start addressing our facility needs. And hopefully, again, as we work through this whole budget process, again, we, this proposal here, when we get into the budget, just maintains status quo. The whole goal over the next two months, working through this financial recovery plan, is to try to find ways to balance the budget, add back hopefully, you know, enough so that we can do a $50 million bond issue and really address our facilities, and also start to add back some of the educational needs that we are identifying through our financial recovery plan. But at this point, we don't want to make those type of assumptions, because we need PFM to actually go through the five-year projections and see where we are. We need to work through this recovery process. I, you know, again, as I've said, I think we've identified some areas where we might be able to save some money by being more efficient on the support side of the house to the tune of about $2 million. All of that is going to come together into this plan. And once that's done in June, we'll be able to identify how much we're going to be able to spend on facilities, how much we're going to be able to add back on the curricular side so that the following year is really about implementation.
So if you look at the next page, so you don't even have to turn it, because it's side by side there. This compares really the 1718 estimate, the numbers we just talked about, to the 1819 budget where we feel it being there. The next two pages in your book and the next two slides are going to go over highlighting some of the major changes. So I don't want to talk about this too much here. But basically, overall, we see an increase of about $2.2 million in revenue over the year, most of that being in the state subsidy. Again, I'll highlight on the next page there primarily. And then on the expenditure side, again, so this number, we might need an explanation here also, where we're going up $10 million in expenses. But that's really a lot of that related to amounts that we will be moving into the capital, the capital reserve fund to be there. And that's really the amount that, as Brian said, as we're going out, we see year after year that number being really reduced. So putting it aside into a capital fund to do one-time fixes is the smartest thing to do, we feel, with that money, aside of spending it on things that would be recurring every year, because that money will not be there every year. So any questions on this before we go into some of the details on the next page? So the next page, I believe, page four, or sorry, five, a couple of changes, our major revenue changes for the year. The major revenue increase, the 15.2 million increase in our basic education subsidy, we all know what that is really. It sort of corresponds with the decrease in the educational access grants, because there was, we received an additional $14 million allocation from the state for the 1718 school year. So in the 1819 school year, it turned into basically an increase in our base for the basic ed subsidy. You see 14.2 million here because we actually received an allocation from the state for the 1617 year. We didn't have fully executed grant agreements until 1718. So the extra $200,000 of educational access money is really related to the previous school year, but wasn't fully executed and recorded until this year. And then two other smaller changes really in the subsidy amounts. But overall, really, where our big change is, the basic ed subsidy and the educational access grant. Next, on the expense side, really, we just have some expense increases here. The one we sort of talked about already, a transfer to the capital reserve fund. The additional amount that we really had on there, we talked about for the one-time transfers that we think those would be decreasing over the years. Overall, salaries, we have about, there's about a 2 percent increase that we included in there. We met with our insurance administrators today, and they really told us in general to increase your insurance about 6 percent or so. That's really about the market rate nowadays. We did get some more detailed projections from them, which, just today, which we'll be able to digest and sort of work into a final budget. But we think that's a pretty solid number to use for now. The other two main increases of about $1.2 million are charter school tuition. We're continuing that trend of increasing, we think about 5 percent annually. And then the PUSR's retirement contribution, which is solely really a product of increasing salaries, plus the rate going up for next year. So the contribution is going to go up also. Any questions on the major changes there, or yes?
So on the charter tuition, is that going up, the number, is that going up because more students are going over there, or are there other costs associated that I'm not aware of?
So we assume that the tuition rates that they are adjusting, and they are going to go up a little bit also, but we think we do have a little bit of an increase for this year also to in the charter school enrollment. So really, that's really a product of sort of two things working together. And we think most of it's going to be really related to an increase in the rates as we get updated, which will stay hopefully soon here.
Is that the state's level of rate?
Yes, and it's based on our voucher.
All right. So a slide that's not really included in your book here is really, as we go on, and we have some things we've talked about in the past, and some things that are actually going to be talked about this evening, and it's things that we're going to talk within conjunction really with developing the financial plan. Certain things, we're going to add certain expenses into our budget, like implementing a curriculum replacement cycle, like we talked about in the previous iteration of our financial plan we developed ourselves. We're looking at about a $700,000 annual expense just to replace our curriculum in our rotating schedule. If summer school were to be added, we think that's about a $420,000 expense. And adding a maritime magnet, we think next year will be about $140,000 to really get that up and running next year.
And really, at this point, those are some of our top, at least top needs that we've identified so far through the strategic plan process. They're things, again, we did not want to build into the preliminary budget for you because they're recurring expenses, and we need those five-year projections to be done to make sure that if we add those back, that we can afford them for the next five years. So that, those are things that, you know, again, once we start to get those projections put together and all our needs, those are the things we're going to more than likely be recommending that we add back if we can afford them. And at this point, I'm pretty confident that those type of things we will be able to work in for this year's budget. And then on the cost savings initiative, the all-ed consolidation we'll be talking about tonight, and also the before-school programming, we have that on the agenda. That's our preliminary estimate for what that program cost us this year. So we, you know, we promised the Board that we would do a report on that. So tonight, we'll be talking about how that program's going and give you some ideas. We don't have a recommendation for next year, but we do have some options and a, I guess, a preferred path for the following year.
Here you go. You'll see, going back to, this is going to be back in your book now, my notes. This is really the chart that shows us where our money comes from revenue-wise. So this is on page seven, the beginning of your revenue section in your book there. So this really just sort of highlights, it puts it graphically to illustrate where our money comes from, really. The large piece off to your left-hand side there is 64 percent. That is our state subsidy. So a large, large portion of our money does come directly from the state. So we're heavily reliant on the state funding our school district. The other largest piece off to the other side here, the blue one, is real estate taxes at about 23 percent. So those two combined come up to about 87 percent of our revenue budget. So those two pieces are by far the majority of the money that we bring in every year. This is sort of just depicts how heavily reliant we are on the state, even above our real estate tax amount there. As we go to the next one, it's, I believe it's page 14, because you have some detail in the between pages on the revenue that really makes up the summaries that you have in the front of your book. This is the graph that really shows where we spend our money. A large portion off to the side, again, 51 percent being salaries and benefits. So that's over half of our budget, then also if you include the other benefit of our retirement expense, another 12 percent, the blue piece off to the other side, that is another $24 million. So those two pieces in total there, we got about 63 percent between those two. Sort of pull retirement out and look at itself, because those are really terms that are dictated to the district, and we can't really set ourselves, since that's really a contribution to PUSRs that we don't really have any control over. With the other main piece that we really see in our district, you know, the top there, the charter school tuition, 13 percent of our budget, expecting about $27 million going to charter schools next year, so for 13 percent of our budget in total. So as you go in, in your book, really, the next several pages that you're going to see are summaries of the functions of the school district, the function basically being what sort of service we're trying, we provide during that. So if you go look at page 15, I believe that is the regular instruction or regular education budget there. So that's going to be the money that we specifically spend for educating our students in like a normal classroom setting, basically, to put it simply. Then each function after that, it has a little description at the top explaining how the money is really, really, the service that the money is trying to support. And down below, in the detail of the summaries, you see the type of expenditure is, whether it's salaries or retirements or employee benefits or supplies or anything along those lines. So you see that for all of our functions. And if you really, really want to go into a lot more detail after that, you have all of these separate account lines that we have in our general ledger that make up those summaries, and that's, I think, the final 60 pages of your book there. So really, the summaries are a good idea to get, if you want to see how we spend our money towards each segment of the school district.
Not an important question, but just relatively, the charter piece of the pie, is that holding steady, is it increasing?
So we're seeing, so we're seeing a total sort of increase in, so we do think that the amount is going to go up slightly, about 5 percent from year to year. So that makes it grow a little bit, a piece of our pie grow a little bit every year. I think maybe compared to last year, that might have been 12 or 11 percent. So it's slightly growing, that what we're seeing in our transit, we're carrying that expense out farther. So that's really the end of the slides that really pertain directly to the book. Is there any questions on those slides of the book before? Got some other information we could connect over here. I know it's a lot to digest, so again, you know how to contact Brian or I or Randy if you have any questions in more detail. All right, so with that, I'll move on. These next couple of slides here, what we really want to do is, we got some information we just thought it was good to lay out, to really compare Erie School District really to other school districts in the state. So what you see off to this, off to the far side from me, is the school districts in the state of Pennsylvania, I believe this one does not include Philadelphia though, so only one school district, and a very large one of that is not included in there. So every other district is included in there, just showing what percent of their budget is spent in certain areas. So that's for the 1516 year for the state averages. It's the most current information that I have there. And then what we have off on this side here is the 1617 year, so one year later for the Erie School District, using the same exact categories, showing the pieces of pie here. In the following slides, I'm going to break out and discuss in more detail really the salaries and benefits line, or pieces of the pie, to kind of compare those. We'll also specifically talk about what's listed as Object 500, Other Purchase Services. That's the one where really holds our charter school tuition expense lines. Some other stuff in there, but really the major one for us is charter school tuition. And then also talk this, the two pieces at the top there, the small green piece and the larger pink piece, those are really the property, property and equipment purchases being the green one and the pink one being other uses of funds. This is primarily your principal and interest paid on financing arrangements, and usually your financing arrangement supports your building. So when we look at that, we're really looking at the amount of money we put into the physical components of our district. Is there any other pieces you want me to talk about besides those ones? Really, we line up really close everywhere else. So I'll go into those next ones if there's no questions on anything else there.
Just to the purchase services, that's the charter schools?
Yeah, charter schools included in there. It's not all charter school, but it is included in there, and that's our largest piece of that.
And then any other companies that we deal with, is that what that means?
Yeah, so contract transportation--
Right.
--legal services and counting most of them, and how you service us.
But the percentage being higher is most likely due to the charter schools?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes. So yeah, and so we'll look at that even more detail here. So again, so just highlighting the specific pieces that we talked about here. Really, this is the salary and benefits pieces. So averages for the state in 1516, on average, a state would spend about-- So averages for the state in 15, 16, on average, a state would spend about 41% of their budget on salaries, and another 10% on employee benefits. That employee benefit piece is most completely, really, the insurance piece of the benefit package, does include retirement or payroll taxes. Again, we sort of, I sort of excluded those because those are terms that are dictated to the district, and we don't have any control over it all. So those two pieces for the state in 15, 16 comes out to about 51% of a school's budget is spent in those two areas. The school district are two pieces here, we come up to 52%, so just 1% higher than the state averages. How we get there is a little different with having salaries making up 39% of our budget versus 41, and the other, and the employee benefits, mostly our insurance piece, being 13% of our budget versus 10% there. I think a lot of the increase or the, above the average amount there in the employee benefit side is really the retire, or health insurance 265, that's sort of a unique benefit that's offered, and so that's where you sort of see that cost driver coming out here when comparing to other districts that most likely predominantly do not have that benefit.
And we do have that mostly offset, though, when you look at the salaries.
So in a total...
In total, we're, our compensation package is pretty similar to other districts across the state.
Exactly. We just kind of get there in a different method a little bit. Next slide again, so as I said, we talked specifically about the purchase services and others, so the state, on average, 11% in that area, where we spend 19%, so an additional 8% of our budget goes towards that, and like we said before, the main driver in that is charter school tuition there. So so remember, so 1% is about $1.8 million at this time, so when we're looking at, you know, 8% or so, it's coming out to maybe $15 million or so above where we spend, if we spend at the state average there. So you can see that's really where that, that our largest discrepancy is, and we know that we are among the state leaders in charter school enrollment, so this is really where you see that cost driver coming true when we're comparing to the rest of the state. Sort of, really, the only other area that we sort of have a larger discrepancy is, is related to what I call the property and equipment, and basically the other financing, really the, again, the money that's really spent on the physical components of our district, where an average school district would spend 14% of their budget between those two pieces, where we spend about 8%. So, so basically...
Debt service on our buildings, so really, when you look at, if you go back to the last slide eight, you see that where we have the issue with the charter schools, how we've been able to manage the increase in the charter expense over the last 15 or so years, as we haven't done anything with our buildings. And that's basically what it is.
So those are really the two only areas where we have discrepancies, and they almost completely offset, so you can really see an increase in that, it's really a decrease in our buildings. So next slide, we're sort of switching back into the revenue side of everything.
This is, I know the board's favorite topic is tax increases, it's something we feel we need to at least bring up and share with you all the options this year. The budget that Dave has presented for this upcoming year just maintains the 0.5% tax increase that the board had agreed to in the initial financial recovery plan. This year, we'd like to recommend that we do that tax increase this year, and as you can see, for, as far as impact on a $100,000 home, that 0.5 increase turns into about an $8 increase in tax, a tax bill for an average homeowner in the city, and the estimated revenue we generate there is about $200,000 a year. And this year, with the Act One Index, you can see we can go up to 3.7% for a tax increase if we were to increase at that high, and again, we're not recommending that, but that would generate about $1.5 million, and would be about a $62 increase for the average homeowner.
So, this is kind of a approach that we looked at, and I know I think we talked about at least with the financial advisory committee that we have, we wanted to really compare what, year by year, what the, this first column here being really the consumer price index, basically measuring what inflation is over year to year, sort of compare that to the averages of the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment annually, year to year. You see that those two, the cost of living adjustment is calculated off of, off of the inflation is really part of it, so it's no surprise that really, over the, how long we've really been looking into this, the average for those two categories really does come out to an increase of 1.9%. So what that really means is that generally, things cost 1.9% more every year over the last, I think we have 12 years laid out here, and people, when they're on, when they're on fixed income, their social security income, it did go up on average 1.9% over that same time period. So the cost of living adjustments did cover really the consumer price index increases year to year. So we're looking at it, how we compare that to how our tax rate has gone up year to year, we average over that same time period, if there is a half a percent for this year that's why it's highlighted, because that is not set in stone, our increase average over that same time period would be 1.5%, so a little bit below what the average increases are that we really see.
So, and if you look at the last five to eight years, this board has been very fiscally responsible with the tax increases, and it shows that we have been well below the cost of living, the CPIU, as well as the Social Security Cost of Living Increase each year. The, you know, the big thing that I think we always like to point out on this slide is, if you look at the tax rate increase on the far right-hand side, you know, we have a lot of zeros, but then we have a lot of big years. And certainly, this is not going to be the year that I would be recommending it, but eventually, a year or two out, we really need to be thinking about getting on a annual cost of living type tax increase, because we're going to get there one way or another, it's just a matter of doing the smaller increments each year, or going to the point where we're in trouble and having a huge tax increase. So that's something, again, that we're not recommending this year, we have a lot of work to do with our financial recovery plan, but it's something I think a year or two down the road, we would be looking to propose.
Excellent, this is just really comparing, this is all the other school districts in the county graphically in this, with the bar graph being the current school, school military for each of these school districts in Erie County there. As you can see, we're, I believe, several years ago, we were more, even more at the higher end, almost one of the highest, and since really, since those adjustments, or since we saw our increases really have been below the really inflationary rate, we sort of progressed going back more towards the average a little bit here.
We were, really, when I started here, I believe, Iroquois and Fairview were the only ones higher than us. Again, over the last three years, we've really slipped back, as those school districts have, again, gone and put in tax increases. On the next slide, too, this is something that I just want to compare, because that, I think that doesn't tell the whole story as far as what a typical taxpayer pays here in the city of Erie. And we did a comparison here of this Erie City School District, as well as the two rings of municipalities surrounding us. So it's the different municipalities that are closest to the city of Erie, that if somebody was moving in to the Erie area, would be possibly considering buying a home. And if you look at this first line here, that's the county taxes on a $100,000 home in each of those municipalities. And you can see it's all the same, because the county tax rate is the same for every municipality across the county. If you click on the next slide, this is the tax on a $100,000 home in the city of Erie, and taking into effect the homestead exemption, which is the $328?
348.
348.
348, something like that.
Reduction that we get from the gaming revenue, which is much higher than the surrounding municipalities. So when you look at this, you can see that as far as the school taxes, what a homeowner in the city pays for school taxes, we're actually below average when you look at those municipalities that are closest to us, and that's because of the, you know, fiscal responsibility of this board, as well as the increased gaming revenue, and really, that's what that was intended to do, is level the playing field for, you know, urban school districts. But the real kicker here, and you know, the concern when, when we're looking at raising taxes in the city is, and worrying about driving people out of the city, is the city tax. So when you plug that in, and you look at where, you know, somebody with a $100,000 home is, as far as tax rates, the city tax really pushes us to the top. So again, when, you know, I thought this would be good information for the school board, when people are complaining about taxes and telling you that we're actually taxing too much, we really aren't. This board has been very conservative, and the tax rate is actually very competitive on the school taxes with all the municipalities around us.
So, Mr. President, just my opinion is, it seems like we need to have some marketing, because everybody thinks, oh, it's those horrible school taxes that are keeping us from, that are dissuading us from living in the city of Erie, but that's not the case.
It's not.
So how do we get that? I'm not a marketing guy, but how do we get the word out there that, hey, city, it's you, it's not us, the school guys?
We can talk to Dari about that.
And I mean, not to be petty, but...
She's here tonight, yes. We're going to assign her something since she's not here.
We're always, and the general opinion is, we're the bad guys.
Yeah.
So if we were to put that out there, we just give that ad or whatever, and say, hey, you know, pub that. How long has that been true in the city? It's just the last few years, isn't it?
Really, since the homestead exemption really went into effect, it's, you know, it's probably, our homestead exemption, really historically, has been more beneficial.
Yeah, and this is something Dave brought. I didn't, I never even thought about this when I was doing my analysis, but the homestead exemption really levels it. But I would say, probably, when I came on board about three years ago, we would have been closer to the middle, maybe above Harwood Creek and Fairview, and below Wattsburg. But those schools have actually raised taxes, Mill Creek, or Wattsburg has raised taxes significantly over the last couple of years.
But alongside that, the city of Erie's taxation jumped at some point, didn't it? I mean, in a big way?
I, I looked at, we looked at that, and we didn't see anything significant over the last several years, but they, they do raise taxes every other year. So theirs has been increasing incrementally over the last several years, and theirs hasn't.
Are they attached to some, like, you said, cost of living, or whatever, are they attached to that as they do, or they just do it every other year?
I don't think so. I can find out. I think, I think initially, the idea was that they would raise taxes one year, and we would raise taxes another year, and that kind of fell apart over the years, but that Mayor Schember and I have kind of talked about this, so we could really, you know, if the board, once we get to the point where we want to start thinking about, I guess he's always looking at me sideways when I talk about it, incremental tax increase, I think that's something we should do in coordination with the city, so that we're...
Well, I mean, I understand the theory, because I know that if we went, I mean, that chart went to 2008, where you, you know, it went back to 2008, but if you would go back, I mean, that was a pattern. School boards, I don't want a tax increase, you don't want a tax increase, because politically, they didn't want to be able to be responsible for a tax increase. Well, then they would put it off and put it off, so by the time they did go for a tax increase, it would be on an off-election year, and then they would go and go for the goal, and so they would make these huge increases that really hurt people badly, and at this point, we can't do that. I mean, that's why I'm, I have no, like, the 0.5 in increments, and if it was to some degree on those, on those kind of levels, I understand it, but you would hope that maybe we can, I mean, it certainly does give us some, something to talk about when we're talking about the LERTA program, of why we're not as enthusiastic as they may be, you know? So...
Any other questions on this slide here? No, this is next here. Oh, so I think this is the last slide here, really, just sort of the timeline and what we're going to talk about with budgets that we really have to work with. We get another chance to discuss the preliminary budget at the next committee of the whole in May, where we have to officially adopt a preliminary budget to send to the Pennsylvania Department of Education at the May Board Meeting. At the committee of the whole in June, we'll discuss a final budget to be ready to adopt in, to be adopted at the June 20th, 20, or 2018 Board Meeting. In that, effectively, with adopting that final budget, that would include anything that was set, the tax rate for next year also, so it would be included in that, there wouldn't be a specific separate resolution for it, just be included in the budget adoption there. So I think that's, that's all I have right now, so let me know if you have any questions now, or...
Dave, none of those bars and pie charts are in here, are they?
The last ones, no. I could get them to you if you want, I could send them out to everybody if you want to see them, again.
Well, that one especially, the Brian and Tom are talking about.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could just even get the whole PowerPoint presentation out, because eventually we'll send that out to everyone here. If you wanted a PDF, we could do that also, too, or we could print them out for you, too.
Might have to bring it to the supermarket with me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Second?
Well, you already talked about LERTA, but we got to go to before-school.
Right, we, as I mentioned earlier, we did promise the board a, an update on before-school program, before-school programming. At your desk tonight, we have a sheet here that just summarizes the participation in the before-school program. We have the estimated annual cost and some options for next year, and I just want to start out by saying that this is something that I think that we've been struggling with for the last year. It's been very difficult for us to manage and administer, and part of it has to do with when the buses are dropping off the kids, and part of it's the change in start times. And I think if, you know, if I look back on everything that we did last year, if there's one area that I would have done differently, it would have been this one. We, again, it's been a lot of challenges here. We don't really start school until 9:20 at the elementary schools, so you can see here, I broke this out, if you look at each of the schools, there's a section here with three different columns that shows how many kids are arriving at 7:40, and are there from 7:40 to 8:40. The first column is our before-school programming that we have, the second one is, is the programming paid for by our grants and other school partners, Gears and Carpe Diem, and then the third column is the total, but another big issue that we're having in the morning is the buses are dropping off at about 8:40 to 8:45. So we have another, in addition to the 1,200 kids that are coming for the before-school programming, we have another 1,600 showing up about 40 minutes before school starts. So, again, that's been very difficult, I think, for our teachers and administrators to manage this year. You can see the cost of this program is actually higher than what we anticipated. It's still running about $30 a kid per month, so it's reasonable, but we have a lot more people taking advantage of this than, than we anticipated at the beginning. So we've been kind of kicking around some different ideas on what we could do next year, and I just really listed all the options that we have available to us right now. You know, of course, we could maintain the status quo on this and continue to run it. The second is something that we did talk about last year, is charging parents, you know, somewhere between, you know, zero and $30, the actual cost of the program. Another option would be to eliminate the program, and then the last one really is something that I think that we have some potential here, is actually, and we talked to EMTA yesterday about the possibility of doing this, is swapping the elementary and high school start times. So the elementary students would start first, with the middle school students at eight, and the high schools would start later. Now, we think that EMTA can do that, they're, they're taking a look at that right now, we'll have some more information hopefully in the next two weeks. The other big issue with this that we really need to work through and make sure that, that if we do this, it's right, is making sure that the high school, the buses are at the high school at dismissal guaranteed, because that's one of the big reasons why we wanted to run the high school first and the elementary second, to ensure that when Erie High dismisses, that all those buses would be there, so the students could get right on, on the bus, and the campus would be cleared out. And that's been working very well this year. There is concern among all the administrators up there, and for us as well, that if we do this, and we have, you know, one or two buses that aren't there at dismissal, it could lead to problems after school. So that, that's a big area that, that we need to work on before we bring a recommendation to you, but right now, that, if we can work through all that, that would be our preferred recommendation with this, and by doing that, we would not need to have the before-school care programming, because we would be back to the eight o'clock start time for the elementary schools. And so that's kind of a synopsis of the numbers and what we're thinking. I wanted Diane to speak a little bit about the programming and how that's really impacting the schools, too.
Sure. Am I good here, or do you need me there?
Wherever you like.
Oh, good, I'll stay here. So, when I was in conversation with Brian and with Teresa today, it's really a culmination of a lot of conversations that I've been having with folks at the building level. And the original intent, as I remember, of before-school programming was to fill the gap, the time gap for parents in this transition year, when we switched the times, right? So that was really the original intent. The bottom line is... The bottom line is our children, all the numbers of children that are coming, are safe and cared for. That is true. And when we think about kind of three categories of stakeholders, if you will, when we think about the youngs, our youngest students, so pre-K, K1, many of them are at school for a long time now, eight and a half to nine hours. And I understand that if they're going to after-school programming after school, they're still away from their home, but the expectations there are very different than they are in the academic setting. So I'm six years old and I get to school at 7:30, and I'm leaving school sometimes at 3:50, four o'clock, and all that time, there's some kind of academic expectation put on me, and that's a long time for our youngest kiddos. So that's one kind of way we've been thinking about and talking about. With teachers and with staff, we see some other challenges that maybe we didn't anticipate fully. So when are teachers getting together with their building-level administration? It's not happening as fully as it had been in the past because we have so many folks who are working before-school care. So not only does that eliminate the opportunity for them to meet us at building with their administration, but it also really prohibits some of the conversation teacher to teacher. So grade-level team planning, that has, again, happened as the campus has been clearing at the end of the day. The best intent is that it would happen before the children would arrive, but again, with so many folks who are tied into before-school care, that doesn't happen as fully as we would hope, or it had happened in the past. And then when we think about the district, clearly, Brian has shared with you the numbers, $250,000 as a, as an expense. For me, that sounds like a whole bunch of money. I mean, based on what Dave just said, maybe it's a small piece of the pie, but that's a lot of dollars. And if, in fact, we wanted the program to be as educationally sound and helpful as we had hoped and anticipated, we'd probably, student-to-teacher ratio, have to double that cost. I mean, really honestly, if we wanted all of the benefits of extended time to happen in the morning, maybe not double, but pretty close to, to double that cost, to make it as effective as it could be to academically. So those are just some thoughts from, again, not just my perspective, but building folks whom I've spoken to and the kiddos that I've seen, you know, both at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, as, as, and many of us are in and out of buildings. They're tired, the little ones are tired. And that's really half, if we're talking about K1 and 2, it's half of the population that we're serving at the elementary level.
Well, as you know, I was in on the discussion from day one with the whole before-school program as far as what was going to be happening, the numbers that I knew that were going to be more than could be handled, how it would affect current childcare providers, the, the costs that we talked about, that we went back and forth on, and I'm seeing all these factors here today. And we kind of talked about the costs and that got tabled by, I guess, the board, but that's something we discussed from the beginning, was charging like $25 for the kids to come in the morning, and then also just how many kids are going to take advantage of the program. And, you know, when we first discussed this, I'll let you guys know that there's going to be a lot more than probably expected, because once we got in the motions of it, more and more parents, including myself as a parent, my kids come early, too, and then that's extra support that they need because obviously they're in the autistic support But I do observe, like, at my kids' before-school program, and I know you mentioned, like, the teachers getting tied up in it, I don't really see a lot of teachers, I don't know, between at eight o'clock in the morning, I, I see them mostly like in the cafeteria in the library. I don't see, like, it's not like a lot of, I don't want to say instruction, there's no instruction going on. They're, they're either watching something or reading books in the library. I mean, they're doing something constructive, but it's not really an instructional time. So I wouldn't say they're doing instructional time from eight o'clock in the morning till 3:40 in the afternoon, because they're not. But I will say that that is a long school day for some of the kids, but like, once you, once again, when you say they, they stay after school, too. So Gears was usually till like 5:30 in the evening, too, so I've seen that program in motion as well, where they have to actually do academic work in the afternoon. So I thought that that was one of the options here with the Gears, Carpe Diem, doing it before school, which is on the paper, but if you're not doing it after school, you should be, it should be being done before school. It's great for that.
Yeah, those are the kids that are participating right now before school in those programs.
Okay, so that's one thing, because even if, whether you change it or not, if those kids are going to be signed up to Carpe Diem or Gears, they're still going to have a long school day. So that's not really going to make a difference one way or the other. I would say it's more so those kids that aren't signed up to the program and the ones that are getting off the bus between 8:40 and 9:20 would be more so the issue that's bringing a lot of extra kids. It looks like to me it's the bus that's bringing a lot of the additional children. So I don't know if the bus times could be changed. Maybe you can talk to EMTA about pushing back...
They're talking about switching them.
No, I'm just saying, before you switch school times, is it a possibility, is there any explanation as to why they're dropping them off so, so early to the school, or is it because they have to do it?
They have to go back.
Yeah, it's the, it's the double run. And we, the other option that we were exploring was actually moving the school day back about 15 minutes for the high school and elementary, so that the high school would start at 7:45 and the elementary's starting 15 minutes earlier to line that more up with the, when the buses were dropping off. But we did approach the association about that, and they, they didn't feel that it was enough time to take it to their membership for a vote. So that, that was another option we did explore, and ideally, it really, it really was putting a Band-Aid on, on the overall issue.
Right.
So, you know, I think that was a positive thing, because the, the more we look at this, you know, it just, it seems like the best approach, if we can do it and guarantee what's going on at high school, is to have the elementary kids start first. There's going to be some issues with sporting events and kids having to leave early from Erie High because of that, but that's compared to the number of kids that are disrupted because of this program, that it's a drop in the bucket. So that's...
Well, my, my, I have a concern, concerns with the high school level, too. Number one would have been after-school programming for those kids because they have practices, games, all of the above. And then also, just that before-school time, when I'm just a little bit concerned about, because these are older kids and there, there is no before-school program for high school students, just would that affect, like, truancy or them getting to school in general? Because now, parents, with this before-school program, parents of high schoolers are, like myself, taking their children to school all at the same time. I'm taking my high school student, I know she made it to school before I go to work. I'm taking my elementary school students because I know they, they're in the before-school program. So what exactly is going to happen to my daughter, who's in high school, who now starts at 9:20, and I have to leave before she goes to school? So I'm just going to, like, you know, that's a, that's a real parent concern, because now I'm, I'm leaving my high school students at home till after I'm already gone, you know, whereas right now I see a lot of parents who take all their kids to school at one time that work in the morning. So, I mean, just a couple of things to think about. I mean, my, my thing would be to either maintain it or charge, which is one thing we talked about from the beginning. So then you would be able to, because we discussed, the parents that actually are going to work versus the parents that are just bringing them early because the option is available. Because our initial idea was it for it to be for parents that are working. And then also by, with that cost, is if they have childcare already, and we talked about this, I believe that they would put that burden on the childcare provider versus the school if you, if there was like an additional cost, so. That's my opinion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The one question I have, and I remember all this when it first transpired, and, and I remember asking this question, and because I had heard it throughout, I, I was involved in a lot of presentations over the years, and, and the idea of, of like, what is optimum educationally for, for kids of certain ages? And that, and that younger children should be in school earlier and that older children should be a little bit later on down the line? That that was, that was like an established theory or, you know, and so I, I disagreed that we were changing it in the first place, that we were doing that because of that, but at that time it was because that EMTA could not provide that, or, or that we didn't think EMTA could provide that, to, to do that. But academically, is it true or not that those, that that's a research-based theory? That's what I'd like to, just, if somebody could comment, I would appreciate it.
Yes, it is. If you know, and you were to look at what is research-based, it, they will tell you that our older students do need more sleep, and they're not getting it right now. In addition to the fact that they have, a lot of them have their smartphones with them throughout the night, and they're continually interrupted, and they're really not getting into REM sleep, and it's, so what we're doing right now is, is very developmentally inappropriate. The fact that we have very young children that are going to school, some of them, I'm being told, and I don't know if this is accurate, but being dropped off at like 7:15 in the morning for the Carpe Diem programs, then they're there until, you know, at least four o'clock in most cases. And when I'm visiting the schools, doing my master gardener work and Mr. Yuck, what I'm seeing is children that are a little bit, the elementary children, they're a little bit tired and possibly even burned out by three o'clock. So I, I just think if we're going to do what's developmentally appropriate for children, the best thing to do would be to swap our start times. I think that we would have students that were more productive within the classrooms. However, I understand that that could be a hardship to parents who want to make sure that their children get to school at a certain time before they go, they go to work. I also have a problem with the fact that our tax increase of 0.5% isn't even covering this program. So, but that concerns me. Then I'm almost feeling as though that we, we have to re-raise our taxes up 1% because we need to, we need to continue to increase our revenues, but at the same time, then we have to pay for this program.
The $250,000 for this program is built in to the...
Is built in, okay.
And, and again, and we set that up as a status quo budget.
Okay.
And that's why we put this, that one up in the all-day discussion, because those are things I think we need to hight out here over the next couple of months before we finalize.
And I do think a lot of schools do offer before-school programming for their students, but they do pay for it. So I understand the nature of why we went, or the reasoning for why we went into this last year, because it was last minute, and parents did need to have an option. But I do think the parents, I think most of the parents think that, that they're going to be asked to pay now, that they're not expecting us to provide this for them. So, yeah, but anyways, if you want to talk about what's developmentally appropriate, it would be option four, but I also understand what I was saying.
We did say it was a one-year trial. As far as the cost, we did say, because it was last minute, that we were not going to charge people because of the last minute, but...
I also am wondering, I don't know if the high school kids would do this or not, but, you know, could they have some of their activities in the morning before school?
Breakfast is...
Yeah, I mean, my, my players at Villa never liked it, but sometimes I had 6:00 a.m. practices.
You guys talk?
Greg, I guess a couple comments. One, Diane, if we, if we stopped this program as we currently have it, if we switched some after-school activities, would that increase the cost? I don't even know that number now, I mean, or even if that's the case or not, but would that increase the after-school activity cost on, on the district? I don't know that. So I don't even need to give the answer, but just something that we're thinking about. That'd be one. And two, I guess what we don't see is, right now, really, I see it, if, if the research says we should do something for the best interest of the children, I think that should be the prevailing thought. That's one. The other thing is what we don't see is how many of these young children that are in second, third grade that are home because mom and dad aren't taking them to school, because they don't have the resources to do that, one reason or another, so they're latchkey morning kids versus latchkey afternoon kids. And I, it seems to me that, just intuitively, that I'd rather have, say, my son who's going into seventh grade next year, be easier for him to, to manage being home a little bit alone in the morning earlier than a kindergartner. Because I do know, I just got a call a little bit ago, there's like a second-grade kid, a student, who has to stay home. They have direct instructions, you do this, you do this, you do this, and then you leave at this time, go to the bus, because the parents just can't manage all that. And I think it'd be easier, the burden on a junior high school and high school kid, it just seems to make sense to me. And then I do like the idea of, you know, when my daughter played volleyball, they have practice at six o'clock in the morning in the summertime, those kids, they'd probably prefer to do that, go to class, I mean, go to school, knock out a practice or whatever it is, they can, it's gym time. I don't, it seems to me that that's, it's a step. So I'm in favor of swapping.
Okay.
So I can respond a little bit to your initial question about after-school programming. There are a couple of things, factors in play. One is that as we continue to expand our partnerships with community schools, but not only community schools, but all of the schools in the district, what we're finding is our corporate and lead partners are more willing to support us in our efforts after school based on their employees' schedules, right? So we're not getting a lot of folks who are able or willing or for whatever reason volunteering in the morning, but they're more able and willing to do so in the afternoon. So as we expand those partnerships and those programs and leverage those resources, not only of the part, the corporate and lead partners, but also of the neighborhood centers. What we know is that neighborhood centers are currently offering programming through, into the evening, but that hasn't, in every case, also translated to earlier mornings. So there's another way that we can fill that gap a little bit differently in the, in the after-school time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was, I'm really glad you said that, because that was something I was going to bring up, is I think this is a, you know, we've, we've really identified in our strategic plan process that we've been going through, pulling in more on our community allies and supports and organizations, and I think this would be a great opportunity for them to kind of give back and, and be involved and invested, and especially since we're moving more to the community programs model, that this is a great way to start that venture in, to getting those organizations supporting, and they are way more inclined to be able to do that in the afternoon versus in the morning. And then just a little tidbits, I am a little, not a little nervous, I'm a lot nervous about keeping this program the way it is if we're going to institute a FE, because I think, I think there's more parents who utilize this, who, who are not doing it to, to spite the system, who, who actually are working, and though it might be $25 to $50, some, some nominal fee to, to us, I think to them, that's, that's a really big grocery bill to a lot of our, our parents who, who might be participating in this program, so I'm just really hesitant. And I'd much prefer to see the swap in the time versus the fee institution and hoping that our community programs and allies would kind of step in, in the afternoon and help us in that, in that venture.
Thank you. No one has anything else, we'll move on. Sale of surplus buildings, Randy?
So for the meeting next week, there is a resolution to determine the real estate agent of record for the sale of our underutilized buildings. If you remember back in February, we came up with a committee of myself, Eric Seibert, thank you, Mr. Spiegel, Mr. Casillo, and Katrina Vincent from the Erie County Redevelopment Authority, to look at the requests for, the responses we got back for the requests for qualifications for, for commercial real estate services. We got responses back from five different realtors in the area. Most of them you're very familiar with. I'll just kind of go through them real quickly and let you know what we decided on and why. The first one was Bob Glawaki from Glawaki Management. You know, obviously, the marketing tools that they were all using, they're all pretty standard. We didn't find a lot of difference between one over the other. Bob has a lot of, you know, the Glawaki management has a lot of experience in the leasing of buildings and also in the sale of more commercial-type of buildings. Howard Hanna, this was Randy Roseski, he has experience in the sale of Richfield School at Mill Creek, Vernon Dale and Mill Creek. So he's actually been involved in the sale of some of public school buildings. And again, the marketing tools that he would use were the same. Agresti Real Estate, they listed that they had a little bit of experience in the sale of Richfield and Vernon Dale, but I don't think they were the, they weren't necessarily the main players in those sales. And again, using the same marketing tools. Marsh &amp; Marsh Realtors, again, another high-profile realtor in the area, again, but very familiar with the commercial real estate, your Walmarts, your Family Dollar stores, those types of buildings. And then, this was the final one, we got Mr. Lloyd Walker, Realtor. Honestly, none of us were very familiar with this individual. Kind of took a different approach than everybody else, was very interested in the sale of the buildings for IRS tax credits, selling to the parties that could get the tax credits. So a little bit different philosophy than the other four. When we summarized them and looked at where everybody was at, you could see, with the exception, they were all pretty much even. They were pretty, within a percentage or so of each other. What we did is we, in the RFQ, we came up and said, we want a price for somebody that's not, had been yet, has not yet been identified versus a list that we're going to provide you with of people that have been through the buildings, that Eric and his team have walked through the buildings, or that I've walked through the buildings. So that's why there's an unidentified versus an identified. Based on experience with the district, if you remember back in the, I guess it was around the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas time, we did the bid packages that we opened up for the sale of the buildings. The only realtor to walk through every single building at that time was Randy Roseski from Howard Hanna. He personally came through every single building, walked through, even though he's been familiar with those buildings, I think he's walked through them before, personally walked through them, took notes. Obviously, there was, you know, just wanted to become familiar with the buildings at that point in time. You know, we've had good experience, I think, working with all of these individuals at some point or another, whether it's real estate assessment cases or, you know, just in general, helping us out with different things. But when it was all said and done, we came up with, that we wanted to proceed with Howard Hanna, and we felt that this was a good time to move forward on this. We've had probably, I don't know, 40 different parties that have contacted us since we announced that we were going to sell the buildings, that have walked through the buildings, that have toured the buildings, that were either not interested or just not ready to do anything right now. But as we get into the spring months here and the summer months, we really need to do something with these buildings. We really need to get them off our insurance rolls, you know, and do something with them to move forwards, to decrease our costs. So that's why we settled on Howard Hanna, and that resolution is in the board agenda for the April meeting.
Any questions?
Questions?
No?
Okay.
Thanks, Randy. We'll move on to relocation of alternative education. Emerson Gridley.
Well, Neil's getting set up, we do have another spreadsheet at your table tonight. This kind of summarizes the cost savings that we would realize by consolidating our Alt Ed programs, our cyber program, credit recovery program, and within two years, our science materials center into one of our buildings. And overall, if you look at the bottom right, you can see that the current cost, facilities cost for all those locations is about $444,000 a year. We are estimating that by consolidating them, and it's actually at Emerson Gridley is what we're proposing right now, it would be $209,000, so it would be a $235,000 a year savings to do this. The one caveat, though, is that the science materials center, we currently have a lease with Moxie Real Estate that runs through April of 2020, so we would not be able to bring that over for another two years. And then Neil's going to talk about some of the programmatic advantages to doing that as well as give you kind of a layout of what he's thinking for the building.
Maybe we'll... Just ask one question before we start, because when we talked about the science, the science part of it, and I know that it's going to be two years, but is there any construction that has to take place at Emerson Gridley for that to be able to house that? I mean, because there was a concern with the other building about the flooring being able to hold jitneys and all of that, was there...
Is Eric back there?
I see him.
Okay. Or do you know the answer for that? You guys walk through.
So to answer that question, while we won't be able to run fork trucks or anything through that building of that nature, almost all of the materials are kept in flip-top boxes. We think that we'll be able to find a suitable way to store those materials and be able to move them around on carts such that we don't exceed the loading that would be allowable on the floor space.
So you've adjusted the procedure rather than worry about changing the structure of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a early buyout option on that lease, or is there a way we can revoke that, or is that...
There is not, but we can contact the landlord and let them know that we would be interested in terminating early if they find another tenant, so there's a possibility we could...
Sixteen, you know, that's $51,000 a year. Hey, let's check the 50 grand, can we go away? Or something with the...
We'll include it in our conversations with them.
Sure. So we're going to, excuse me, we're going to start at the end, and I'm going to talk about why I think this move is appropriate for everything, and then I'll go backwards and I'll take you through the floor plan of where I think everything is going to end up. So, I mean, number one, right now, out of the three separate locations that we have the non-traditional programming, nobody's got a real gym and nobody has a real cafeteria. And I know that's a little thing, but actually moving them into this location will give them access to an actual gym and an actual cafeteria. The other thing is that moving everybody to one location will allow the teachers and the administrative team to work with all of the district teachers in one location, so we can really start to target the professional development that the teachers would get in dealing with students who have high needs. Along those same lines, we've got all the different students there, and now what we can do is we can concentrate all of the district resources in one central location versus having, we need to do something at the Bayfront, we need to do something at St. Anne's, we need to do something at Recovery Academy. So it's, I basically am running something three times. So if I want to do a PD for the teachers, I'm doing it in all three locations three separate times. The thing that I've noticed over the years is a lot of the students who go to the Bayfront or go through SELF, leave there and have very good coping skills, but when they get back into the traditional school setting, sometimes it just doesn't transfer over. And now, after two months, they're back to their old behaviors and they're back in one of my programs. I think part of that is that they learn these behaviors in an atmosphere that while it is schooled, it doesn't necessarily feel like a school. So some of the thought is that if we're going to teach these students how to deal with adversity, and they learn all these coping skills from when they get triggered, if they're learning it in a school setting, then I think it's going to transfer better when they get back to their home schools. I don't have any research behind that, it's just the theory, and I think I'm going to be right. We'll see. And part of the conversations that we've had with the, through the strategic planning team and with the administrators at the middle school level, they have identified that the success that we've had with the high school students at the Recovery Academy could also be used at the middle school level. That I would say that every single one of the administrators there has said that there is a need for something that is similar, and while it's not necessarily credit attainment, it's more trying to get them back on grade level. So the thought would be that we would try to identify about 25 kids in the sixth, seventh, and the eighth grade, target them, invite them to join this program, and we will try to replicate the success that we've had at the Recovery Academy at the middle school The new Chapter 339 regulations that have to do with workforce standards and making sure that everybody has that training, we'll also make implementation of that for all of the students in that program a whole lot easier, because once again, it's in one place and we can actually start doing tie-ins between the programs and the grade bands. And then the last one, and we'll talk a little bit more about the cyber program in a little bit, with us going to a K5 cyber program, part of the requirement is going to be having a face-to-face interaction with the teacher, whether it's two days a week or three days a week, it depends on, we'll figure out what that looks like. But there's no way I'm putting one first grader on a computer all day without bringing that student in to have that face-to-face instruction. So that's, those are the reasons why I think this move is appropriate. And then we'll go back to the beginning and kind of look at the actual floor plan. So the unique thing about Emerson Gridley is the way that the building is set up, the building is, it's completely separated. So first floor, ground floor, which to me is the first floor, has enough room that my thought is, is that in the downstairs, that's where the high school alternative education program would be. They actually would have a separate entrance on West Fourth, so they wouldn't have to use the main entrance. And the way that the building is set up, that there's enough classrooms and enough access to the cafeteria and the gymnasium, that that would be their wing. On that side of the building, there is more than enough room for the eventual move, the Science Distribution Center stuff, and so that floor is taken care of. The, what they call the first floor, which is actually the second floor, the parenting program would have its own wing, and then the Gears program would have a place. Both of those programs are currently housed at the Family Center right now, and so keeping the building open for the six parenting staff and then the Gears program with all of their stuff doesn't necessarily make any sense. Not to mention, over the course of this year, what we've learned is that many of the students who are in Recovery Academy happen to also be enrolled in the student parenting program, and so the connection between the two programs has been very successful this year. On the second floor, which is actually the third floor, this is all of the programs that are currently located at St. Anne's. On the one side, we'd have the Sanctuary-based Learning Program, on the other one, it would be the Sanctuary Education for Learning Fundamentals, so SELF and SBLP. There's enough room for all of the classrooms that we have. There's places for Sarah Reid office space, because their Sarah Reid staff would come along with us. The rooms are bigger, plain and simple. The rooms at St. Anne's are small. It's actually very difficult to get 12 student desks and two teacher desks in there. The classrooms at Emerson Gridley are your typical-sized classroom, so we would be able to fit everything. We actually could probably fit about 15 students with the two teacher desks in there. And then on the top floor, fourth floor or third floor, one half of the building would be Recovery and Cyber, while the other half would be the new middle school program.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm thrilled, because I had a lot of questions tonight about this, and you answered them before we even started. I'm excited that we could actually put our science materials center in there, and I also think, you know, we pay a hefty bill to the IU, and they're doing some creative programming out there right now in science, especially with componics and things like that, that could be STEM-related. So as we're trying to grow what we offer students, there's a possibility that we could make or create really unique programming that would keep our students that are leaving and going to cyber and our, you know, the other charter schools, or keep them in our district. So I applaud you on this move, I think it's fabulous.
The other thing that this move does is, we've kind of outgrown the Family Center already. Recovery Academy fits in there well, but the cyber students, it's starting to get a little packed. And my eventual vision is that the two programs kind of blend together, because what I've learned over the years is that it doesn't really matter what grade the student is in, they need some kind of face-to-face interaction. And so if we have the increase in space for cyber school, now what we're going to do is we're going to start bringing those kids into the building more often so that they can stay on track, they can get that teacher interaction. And that, I mean, that's part of the whole reason why we created Recovery Academy, was because we knew it was valuable, and so I think that will also strengthen our cyber program.
One thing...
Well, just additionally, geographically, I think that we could establish a continuum of learning down there, we have TREP down there, we could get DCNR involved, we have LEAF, we could get the Master Gardeners are now working within all of the elementary schools to do some programming for us. You have Cascade Creek down there, Strong Vincent Middle School, Harding, I mean, there's such great possibility with this location. Also then, with Erie, refocus the fact that they targeted this neighborhood for redevelopment first. I just think this is a no-brainer, and I'm really excited for those possibilities.
One thing I really like about this, too, is the transitions, because we do have a lot of kids coming out of Alt Ed that maybe aren't necessarily ready to go right back to Erie High. It's just a perfect transition for them to move up to the third or fourth floor and into credit recovery for, you know, a couple months until they're ready to go back to Erie High. The other thing about this is we will have mental health and behavior staff on-site for our Alt Ed program, so we do have some kids that are in Recovery and Cyber that could utilize those services, and they'll be right there on-site. So it's really a win-win for the cost and the programming.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The only question I have is, so at the end of the two-year with the, as far as the science program, all of our, we won't be paying rent to anybody at that point, or are we still paying rent? We won't be paying rent to, on any of our buildings from, at that point?
Yes.
That is, that is a good thing to, you know, I mean, when you talk about a criticism that people have on a regular basis, I'm very glad to be able to answer that question. Thank you.
And Mr. Patrungar did get an email from a neighborhood group this morning. I think there's some concern about the students being located in that neighborhood, but I think, based on that, we think there's a misunderstanding about the type of kids that will be there, because a vast majority will be the credit recovery and cyber programming. We are going to reach out to that individual and try to set up a community meeting and really come out and talk to the neighbors about what we're doing, what we plan to do here, and have them ask some questions about what we can do.
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
But I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
Okay, so Chris has just passed out some information on the Cyber Vendor Committee that we just wrapped up. So the first page is just some basic information. I'm just going to go through this very quickly, I know that it's been a long meeting already. So we, committee was made up of five teachers and five administrators. We had several different vendors, we had six vendors come through the first round, and we rated them based on the rubric that's attached. Out of those six, the committee felt that there were three that were the best, we invited them, those three back, and gave them another look. And basically, in the end, the committee has decided, or in the committee's view, Edge Annuity is the vendor that they would like to choose for sixth through 12th grade, and then Accelerate is the vendor that they would like to choose for K through 5. It would have been nice to have one vendor, but in the end, they preferred the Accelerate platform at the earlier grade bands and the Edge Annuity at the older grade bands. Included in your packet are the course offerings for both programs, and the truth is, is that at no point was cost actually considered. I didn't tell anybody what the costs were for either vendor, they just basically chose what they felt was the best, and in the end, it's actually going to be cheaper than what we're utilizing right now.
By a significant amount, correct?
By a significant amount, yes. And the access for the sixth through 12th grade for next year, it will be, the cost will be cheaper and we'll actually be able to give access to every student in the district from grade six through 12, everything that's there. So everything that Edge Annuity offers, we'll be able to, at a reduced rate, offer this to every student, whether they're in cyber or they're in one of the current middle schools. Now, I'm done. Now, I'm...
Thank you. Good luck. Anybody have anything on new business?
Mr. Feeney's resolution will be added to this as a result of our discussion?
Yes. Anybody have anything else before we go to executive session? If not, we'll take a five, 10-minute break, and we'll resume in about turn three for executive session. Personnel and legal matters.